I'm going to call to be in the order at 5:59. Please stand in their place. Here.
Michelle Kaiser, here. Michael Metzger.
Here.
Michelle Kowinski, here. Mary Littleback.
Here.
Jonathan Gerber.
Here. Exits are to your left, right, and behind us. Review and approval of board agenda. Have a motion to approve the agenda as presented and/or amended. Motion please. Mike, second. Patty, any discussion? On favor? Closed. Motion carries 6-0. Minutes of May 17th, 2022. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of May 17th, 2022, business meeting as presented at this meeting? Motion please. John, second. Mike, any discussion? On favor? Closed. Motion carries 6-0. Minutes for May 25th, 2022. Motion to approve the minutes for May 25th, 2022, special business meeting as presented at this meeting. Motion please. Mike, second. Aaron, any discussion? On favor? Closed. Motion carries 6-0. Minutes for June 6th, 2022. Motion to approve the minutes for June 6th, 2022, special business meeting as presented at this meeting. Motion please. John, second. Mike, any discussion? On favor? Closed. Motion carries 6-0. Statements and reports.
Evening, everybody. COVID update, last one for the 2021-22 school year. This morning, as of the weekend when I was working on this presentation, we had zero cases. We did end up having one today. But we have one case in the entire district right now, and that gives us a 0.16% positivity rate in the school district. Historically, though, we did hit the 40% mark by the end of the year. So we've had 241 cases here in district, which equates to 40% of our total K-8 population, and that's staff, students, teachers, administrators, everybody. The New York State COVID, G O H COVID positive rates yesterday was 5.8, and the seven-day average is at 5.2. We are hoping that for the fall, that things will return to even more normal. The weekly testing mandate for non-vaccinated individuals does expire at the end of June. We do not anticipate that that will be re-upped, but as we've learned with COVID over the last two years, you never know what's going to happen. But that expires as of the end of June, so this week will actually be our last week of testing, because next, if anyone wants to get tested next week, we can give them at-home tests. But if we were to test on Tuesday, when we come back to school, we wouldn't even have the results until after school gets out. So this is our last week of that, and hopefully next year, we don't have to do the test. We'll be doing it again. So I just want to talk a little bit for summer 22. Lena Polczynski, Director of Critical Instruction, and our own administrative staff have been working really hard to create some excellent summer opportunities. We have summer committees that we have every summer, and then just the topics change year to year. This summer, we have the Wellness Committee, run by Amy Petrazi, our Director of People, Personnel Services. We have a PBIS, which is Positive Behavior, Intention, and Supports, and SEL, Social, Emotional Learning Committee. That is a K-8 committee. A District Data Committee, that's run by Lena Polczynski, Director of Critical Instruction. That is also K-8. And then our Middle School Academic Eligibility and Accountability Committee, which is specific to the middle school and be run by Mr. Kamarn. Ms. Polczynski had the idea, along with me this summer, to do some summer staff development, so she was really hard to create a math institute. And you'll see on the agenda later this evening, we have a lot of participants on that, so I'm very excited with that. That's going to be a week in early August. So all of our math instructors are invited to participate in that. We're also going to be doing our recertification for the Crisis Prevention Institute. It's right there. But Crisis Prevention Initiatives, recertification, and that's to assist students who are in immediate danger to themselves or to others, and how we can intervene with them and how we can support them. And then also, we had a request from one of our teachers on how to work with students who are new to the country, who don't know any English, that get placed in their classrooms. So there'll be an English-language learners opportunity to support those learners in the classroom. What do you do when they walk into your classroom and they don't know a word of English? How do you support them? How do you interact with them? How can you teach them? What are the expectations, et cetera? So they're going to work on that this summer as well. So there is an S M O A with the GLTA for some of that work, and then you'll see the list of participants on the agenda as well. But I'm really excited to begin this, to not just have committees, but have staff development over the summer. And I hope that it's something we can continue to grow and expand on in future years. On Friday night, the GLTA hosted the retirement dinner. This is a picture of the, some of the honorees, not all of them, some of the honorees at the end of the night. The district this year is also going to be honoring the retirees and celebrating tenure at a separate special board meeting that's going to be this Wednesday, 10/15, at 5:30 here in the middle school cafeteria. And we invite all teachers, staff, community members, students to come join us for that. Mrs. DePietro, our Board Clerk and Secretary d'Extraordinaire, has been hard at work planning some nice food for that, and the administrative team as a whole has been working very hard to make that a beautiful event, getting gifts created and decorations, et cetera. So it should be a really nice event, and I hope everybody comes out. That's for reports. Mrs. Connolly?
Good evening. As we wrap up another highly successful school year, we are enjoying a lot of culminating events at the elementary school. On Friday, June 3rd, students and staff enjoy Field Day with 10 activity stations set up at the Lyons and Francis Fields, and barbecue, hot dog, and hamburger lunch under the Elks Pavilion. A return to this whole-day outdoor tradition was welcomed, and a great time was had by all. Special thanks to Dave Lipowski, our entire P E team, our P T S A parent volunteers, our food services, our custodial teams, the Village of Greenwood Lake, and the Elks for all their hard work and support to make this event so successful. Our third graders are wrapping up their elementary experience and prepare to move up with the ceremony at the Greenwood Lake Beach on June 23rd, which I invite you all to come and attend and enjoy. Last Tuesday morning, these students traveled here to the middle school for a tour of the building and a question-and-answer session hosted by the National Junior Honor Society students, which was really appreciated. And last Thursday, our third graders traveled to the Liberty Science Center for their extended-day hallmark trip, and enjoyed lots of hands-on learning and a cosmic trip through the solar system in the Chelsea, Montana. This past Friday, all K-3 staff and students took a stroll down to the town beach for a whole-school picnic and panoramic photo opportunity. Many parents met up with us there, and we all enjoyed some sunshine and the beautiful lake views. Thank you to the Village Police Department and Officer Brennan for helping us with the traffic and keeping everyone safe on our walk there and back. This Thursday, June 16th, we'll hold our last concert of the year, with K-1 performing at 12:30, and grades 2 and 3 taking the stage at 1:45. And on Friday, June 17th, this Friday, we will host a rescheduled Sweetheart Dance, renamed the Kickoff to Summer Dance, in our gymnasium at the elementary school from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. And I'd like to close with wishing all of our retirees, staff receiving tenure, and this board a heartfelt congratulations, and thank you for your support and service, and may you all enjoy a healthy, happy, and safe summer.
Mr. Kamarn?
Thank you. Good evening. I'll pick up where Diane left off, and same thing here, open with wishing a congratulations to all of our retirees, and we look forward to celebrating them here with you on Wednesday. Just to recap, since we saw you last, lots of great events here closing out May and kicking off June. Great job to all involved with the New York State science testing. That was for grades 4 and 8. And we want to thank the P T S A for their staff appreciation luncheon. It was a fantastic day here at the middle school. And thanks to all involved with the planning and operation of the semi-formal. Some of this stuff feels like it was months ago, but it literally was only just a couple weeks that they were here celebrating, as well as the steam fair. Just great events here for our students. Here in June, some of the highlights up there, you'll see our eighth-grade trip. Fantastic learning experience for our kids down to Ellis Island, Statue of Liberty. They took the ferry across into the city. Just a great day for them. On the left up there, that's our Six Flags music trip for our chorus and band. Get to go down there and perform. They had great representation for Greenwood Lake. And I want to thank Laura Croll and the Compton for all of their hard work all year. We're prepping for that, and our spring concert there in the middle. And we also had a closeout of our athletic season. Fantastic event here with our student athletes, celebrating the close of the year, and our spring season. Congratulations to the boys' baseball team finishing up undefeated. All of our spring sports did a fantastic job. To the right there, just a quick story, that's Robot Wars with Mr. Vick's classroom. Sarah and I were in the superintendent's office, just having a quick meeting, and we could hear the commotion. And sometimes, like that, in the middle school environment, that could be a lot of different things, some of them not good. We could hear the kids screaming, so we went running down the hall and quickly knew, like, something good is happening somewhere, let's go check this out. And the students excitedly were wrapping up a unit where they built and programmed their robots, and this was their culminating event of Robot Wars. It's just a great experience, but I put that there because it highlights as you tour the buildings. Here, middle of June, the engagement, the excitement, and the rigor just continues on, and it's just fantastic to see. So also up there, we had our Field Day, thanking Bill Cron and Terry Robosky for all of their work in prepping and planning for that. It was just, again, another great day and beautiful weather. Thank you all of our volunteers that came and helped to support us. The County Executive Youth Awards last week, a great ceremony honoring several of our students. Shaymin Selser Olsen, Olivia Cupo, and Ian Peer were all recognized for being, for their positive change leading to success within their schools. And again, a great event led by the county executive. Looking ahead, we have our finals week, this week beginning tomorrow through Friday. Our local and regional exams will be happening here at the middle school. Next week, with our half-days, the eighth-grade picnic kicks off on Tuesday, the hour of breakfast on Wednesday, and on Thursday, our last day of school in our celebration of our eighth graders and graduation. Happy to report through a lot of planning. We are intending to have graduation outside, and that was a lot of great feedback as a carryover from the COVID ceremony last year, so graduation will take place outside. But one problem that creates for us is parking. So was that a contingency plan?
Yes, it will be outside.
It will be outside. Obviously, we planned for all scenarios, but we intend to be outside. And the problem that creates for us is parking, just to update the community. What we'll do is each graduate will, there are no tickets, it's open attendance, so we welcome students and their families to come out in force. But parking is the issue, so each graduate will get one, excuse me, one parking pass for the upper lot here, and we've arranged with the American Legion. We thank them for accommodating us, we'll have bus shuttles and overflow parking happening at the Legion. We'll be sharing more details with that. We did notify the families of that information. Again, thanks to Legion, and we'll be busy here planning for the rest of the year and heading into next year. Thank you. Were there any questions with graduation?
Thank you.
And I jokingly say it will be outside. Mr. Kamarn, I've gone back and forth about the weather and the weather contingencies, and Mr. Kamarn just keeps saying over and over again to everybody that will listen, "It will be outside, it will be outside."
That's right. I should note that the rain date is that evening. Should there be a weather meant, we will be inside that night, same time. Thank you.
That's all I have for this evening. Thank you very much. We have a discussion in a couple of minutes that I have some slides for, but...
Thank you very much. I'll start with, I'll start with Ms. Lee's report. The legislative part is wrapping up in Albany. And if you look at their website, there'll be a list of what they advocated for, what actually got signed and blah blah, and what they're still advocating. Passed the House and the Senate. So if you want to look at that, if you want to guess. Also, I'll do Okska. First, they had their annual dinner where they recognize all the superintendents, and Sarah was recognized. And would you like to say anything about that?
That was a very nice dinner we went. There were board members and superintendents from around the county, and it was just a really nice evening, and we're out and getting to kind of talk, and again, and kind of keep talking to people in other districts. It's always not much to do in a corner in the end world, so.
Facilities. So in the last facilities meeting, we were still discussing the water softener issue, and I believe we're still waiting for a response from our attorneys on that matter or the engineering firm to come up with a final solution. We also discussed, which I believe is on the agenda tonight, of replacing all the lights in the middle school with LED lights. And we're also, it's on the board, is the approval tonight is to fix, there's another leak in one of the roofs here at the middle school. So unfortunately, prior to replacing the roofs, we have to perform another patch. And there were also discussion on the water panel issue, and we're still waiting for the company that's putting that together to find a solution for us on that. And we're unfortunately still waiting for the playground equipment at the elementary school.
Aaron leak?
Yeah, that's the Aaron leak while he was sitting in the gymnasium and he was getting water dripped on his head. Oh, and also on the agenda tonight is approval to move forward with new LED signs at the elementary school and the middle school.
Thank you. Boarding committee. Boarding committee is going. Policy committee.
That's actually on the agenda. We'll get to that as we follow the agenda. Wait for our second meeting.
Budget committee.
Budget actually, my.
I'll do Chester. I want to congratulate the boys' baseball team who made it to the state championship game. They lost that game. It was a controversial ending to that game, if you watched the video. I think that they were just low outside, basically walked, so.
Against Chester.
No. It was the state championship. Chester being playing.
Right, when Sam walked.
Yes, it was actually Christian Cass. And the graduation for Chester is at 6:00 p.m. Friday, June 24th, on the Chester Academic Academy Athletic Field. So you are all invited to that, to be at that graduation. Let's move on to Boyd.
Sure, I just have a couple of dates to, just let everybody know with Regents coming up. If your child attends for a high school, the last full day of regular classes is tomorrow. Regents exams begin June 15th, they go till the 24th. If you're not sure where your child's taking their Regents, you can always check the parent portal. The list, their schedule is on the parent portal. There's no Regents exams on June 20th due to school being closed for the celebration of Juneteenth. And Warner Valley High School graduation is on June 25th. The last day of school is the 24th, graduation is the 25th. I just want to recognize all of our graduates from Greenwood Lake and wish them the best and congratulate them. Exciting time in your life, so wish you all the best.
Thank you very much. P T S A, Leo is on. Everybody here, Department of P T S A? Village of Greenwood Lake, Leo is on Big Four. Congratulations, by the way.
Hi, everybody. I'm Nancy Cal from Clifford. I'm going to get back now. And five days ago, I was appointed as the village trustee. So one of my functions will be a liaison of the school board. I'm not sure what that, how that works yet, but I wanted to come here tonight and introduce myself, and I'm looking forward to working with you guys.
Thank you.
Well, thank you guys.
Congrats. I have nothing from Mr. Wilson. I know, we have another facilities meeting coming up. I can't do all that to whatever's scheduled again. And crisis again. As we speak. All right. Moving on, Board of Ed discussion topics. Substitute reaps and retired teachers. Request for children of the Village of Greenwood Lake employees to attend in Greenwood Lake schools. Tuition rate.
So we, as everyone knows, we have a large list of retirees this year, and we have a substitute shortage, and we also have interest from our retiring employees to come back and substitute after their retirement. And so I thought it would be nice to recognize our retirees and recognize the value of bringing them back as substitutes. So what I would propose is an increased rate for retirees that is a little bit higher than a regular substitute. They would know our kids, they know our buildings, they know our routines. There would definitely be an added value. They would be able to seamlessly transition into our classrooms and into our other spaces. So what I was thinking is somewhere between 20% to 30% above the regular rate for our certified teacher subs, our non-certified teacher subs, the teacher aides subs, business office staff sub, main office staff substitute, and bus driver substitutes. So that, anything that someone's retiring, that they could do one or more of those things. So the two rates, the range of rates that you see on there, the low end is 20%, and the higher end is 30%. When I first started thinking about this, I was thinking of just kind of numbers in my head. Well, this could be, you know, 125, and this could be 110. But I was realizing that I was just kind of throwing numbers out. There wasn't any rhyme or reason to it. And so I thought that by focusing on a percentage, then we can have a rate moving forward each year. So I would like some board input on whether you think that's reasonable, not reasonable. Would you like it higher? Would you like it lower? Somewhere in the middle? I just wanted to throw something out there and initiate some board discussion.
After they have the entire summer off, are we sure they're going to really want to come back in the fall?
Some aren't ready to leave on June 23rd.
No, I think it's a smart idea. It's like, you know, the kids, you know, I think it's more clear.
Yeah, I mean, especially if there's a substitute shortage, obviously we have people that actually want to do it, that know the school system, know all the kids already, and it would be like, I don't know, I'd say seamless, because they're not going to have all the same stuff in their classroom, but they're going to come in, they can go right where they're done.
It's great, it's great idea. It's all you got to do with the kids.
Okay, so moving forward then, what kind of percentage range? Middle of 25? Do you want to go with 20? Do you want to fall in that range? So this is a great discussion. This is not a board vote at this time. This will help us with creating the agenda items for the July agenda. So the July agenda would have the hourly rates, the daily rates, and we will add a retired employee rate for each of these, and I will make it equivalent to a very close to 25% increase. Something else to consider, and just kind of to keep in the back of your mind, we have several retirees that are experts not only within Greenwood Lake, but experts in their field, and we're hiring brand-new people in their place that may need some support or some training past the end of July. We try to do some overlap as much as possible, but there are some things that hurt happened just at a certain time of year. We need to have the retiree come back to, or ask them to come back, if they're willing to, to come back and train the new people. So that's not really a substitute rate, because we are using their expertise. So I was thinking of a percentage of their final salary out of a daily rate or an hourly rate, and applying that if we hire them back to train. Is that something that you all would also consider? And if so, I would come with something in July for that.
Yes.
All right. All right, the second conversation. There is a Village of Greenwood Lake employee who has contacted me and asked if they would be able to send their children to Greenwood Lake School District. It was a very proud moment. You know, people are talking about us, they want us to bring their kids here into district. The employee is looking to move into district, but has not found a house yet. It is their long-term goal to be here, to be here as soon as possible. But in the meantime, they really would look like their own children in our schools. I reached out to our legal counsel to see if this was something that was possible to add in to our policy, and they said yes, that it definitely was, but that there needed to be some sort of quid pro quo. So if we offer a reduced tuition rate to the children in the Village, the children of Village of Greenwood Lake employees, that the Village of Greenwood Lake has to offer something to us in return. So I had reached out to Mayor Dwyer, and he and I went back and forth on some different ideas. And two ideas that came up, that he said that the village could potentially offer, would be a beach, free beach pass to any district employee. So the Greenwood Lake beach is open only to residents of Greenwood Lake, and so he would open that up to all residents, I'm sorry, all employees of the district. In addition, if any district evening events that are held within their jurisdiction, they would offer complimentary police coverage. So this is not during the day or before or after school. It's our evening events like open house, or if we were to have a board meeting down there for some reason, or some kickoff to summer dance, at those types of events, they would provide police coverage for free. I thought this was very fair and generous offering, something that benefits our employees as well as... something that benefits our employees as well as, uh, the taxpayers of Greenwood Lake. So, the next thing for us to talk about would be a reduced tuition rate for the employees of the Village of Greenwood Lake. So, just for reference, we have to set a tuition rate for non-residents if, if they wanted to attend in our district. And that's a rate that's set, I believe, every August, and it's based on a formula from the state. So, our K-6 rate for 21, 22 was $24,559 per year. Our 7, 8 rate was $23,287 per year. We do have a current policy in place for employees of Greenwood Lake that if they are here for zero to four years, that they pay, they can also bring their child here into district. The first child is $3,000, and that's $1,500 for each additional child. If they are here for longer than five years, then the first child is $1,500 and a thousand for each additional child. So, just, you have those numbers for reference as we move on to the next portion. Uh, so, as we look to village employees, I think it's important that we give a nice discount to them as, you know, they contribute to the community just as much as our teachers and our staff do. Uh, but I, you know, think that it maybe should be a little bit higher than the employee rate. So, I was looking at potentially suggesting $4,000 to $5,000 for the first child and $2,000 to $3,000 for each additional child. That's just an off the top of my head, and I am open to suggestions, higher, lower, somewhere in the middle. So, again, I'm looking for feedback from you. Uh, and this is just discussion. It is not, and something that we're approving tonight. And from here, I would then go to move to creating a contract with the Village of Greenwood Lake.
So, who's the contract with? The school and Village Greenwood Lake?
Correct.
I would suggest maybe reducing the second child rate. So, still getting a little, it's, it's a little high. That would be my suggestion. I mean, I said, I can, I'm paying a little more, but, uh, the second child, we should have a little. Rate should be reduced a little.
Um, when we receive money like this, where does it go? Where, where these funds go?
I believe they would go into general fund. Is that correct, Anne?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The question is, when people pay these funds, where does it go?
General.
General fund.
I would say maybe like up to the middle. And, like, maybe making it a second child, $1,500, or go on the low end. But I understand it should be more than the school and boarding. But, like, you know, if you were to take it to higher, the $5,000, the $3,000, the $8,000, the $1,000, to apply here, especially if you're paying the two children.
So, I did also compare, and I didn't include it on here, a, the private school that's in our area that serves middle school children specifically is at $6,000 per year per child.
Do any other districts allow, uh, town or village employees to attend to districts that don't live in the town?
There are none that I'm aware of in Orange County, but I am aware that it does occur because when I reached out to legal counsel, she said that they have done contracts like this in the past.
Does the village already agree to the, you say, that there's like a contract which should, that's their order?
So, we have not, we have had informal conversations to this point. These were, these were the ideas thrown out. So, from here, I would go and actually sit down with the mayor. But I believe that, that yes, he would.
He's not going to like pull that. If we, you know, all right, if we're, if we're, like, this is high, I'm going to pull this.
No, and, and it, it could be that they offer a little bit more if we go lower, or, you know.
I mean, if it's, we're signing a contract, I hope that whatever we agree on is in the contract, so that way you can't pull that.
Well, no, I mean, but, you know, it's just not, it's not the easiest of ideas, and it's, you're right.
Right, so, it, it could be not all evening events. It could be evening events up to five events, you know, I mean. So, that, that's up for negotiation.
Yeah, just saying, like, you know, we have all kinds of, you know, it's something happening, you know. The government, I, others that, obviously, have older, uh, other best part, I would just put, in case there's some.
So, so, part of the, and it would be similar to the employees, where no additional staff would need to be hired as a result of them tuitioning in. If they're a special ed student or require services that would have to be handled within district. If they required any services outside of the school district, they would have to return to their home district.
What's the rate on non-resident?
$24,559 for K through 6, and $23,287 for 7, 8.
What is the actual cost? I mean, because you said that's from the state.
So, that, so, Anne, do you want to just briefly, where does that number?
That's the non-resident tuition calculated by the state from our state reports that we submit to them.
Is our actual different than that? Is that skewed because we don't have a high school? I think is really what they're getting at.
No, it's not skewed. Well, I mean, it's skewed because we don't have a high school and, and enrollment's low. You know, I mean, it's not to the capacity of the buildings. That, in that way, it's skewed, but it's not skewed.
So, other districts in our region have similar numbers?
Yes.
So, for example, when I, when we have parents that move out of district and say they're moving somewhere else, and can their child continue in Greenwood Lake? This is the number that I hold them.
The costs of educating a student are included salaries, books, technology, the, the items in our budget.
Anybody else?
Let's go jump off one, go back to Mayor Dwyer.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, if you decide, you know, before this, who's going to be in the discussion? So, I don't know, are we allowed to go and sit in the negotiations? Or is it just tell you and then, you go over and negotiate? Then what happens if, what we explain to you when you come back? It's not as simple.
So, um...
I mean, or will it be a?
So, it would have to be a board discussion. Um, it is not a topic that falls that I can see under the reasons for executive session. So, it would need to be public discussion, um, either at a board meeting or at a workshop. Uh, and then you could give me guidance. So, I can go meet, come back with what they say, come back to you in a workshop format, and then it could go on agenda later on. Or we, if you wanted to, you could form a board committee to sit with me and meet and give me some more specifics. And then I could use that information to go meet with the village.
So, are you looking for a number from us right now? Or are they going to recommend a amount of tuition that I can go back to Mayor?
I'm looking for some, it doesn't have to be an exact number, but some guidance on where to go in that range.
I would say $4,000 for the first, and $2,000 for the tuition.
I personally like that. It's been very good, it's been just a little bit less again. I kind of sense for all races.
I would, I think, I'd give $2,000 for the second child. I, I would give $4,000 for the first child. I would just go within the year of, within the year of, what happened.
I think that the, the long-term wage should be better.
Yeah. The employees deserve a better rate, dude. But I would make it.
I would, I would four and then $1,500.
I would say four, I would say four and a half.
$1,500, and then they say no, then we'll go.
Sounds like you have a four, $2,000.
I, I can work with it then when I go to, uh, make with Mayor Dwyer. Absolutely. So, I will move forward with working on this contract with Mayor Dwyer and get back to the board, uh, in the month of July.
Does that, does that go need to be approved by the board?
The contract would need to be approved by the board. And then it would also, I believe, it would go into board policy, but I couldn't be wrong about that. It might just be subject to contract.
Legal counsel.
Have to help me with that.
Village of the floor, and then what do you like to? All the people now? All right, moving on. Accept declaration of results of annual budget vote and election. A motion to accept the results of the 2022, 2023 annual budget vote and election as presented, please. Motion. Mike, second party, any discussion? Call a favor. Mike, closed. Motion carries, six, zero. Accept declaration of results of annual budget vote. All right, all right, good then. Moving on. Second reading of adoption of policy. And a motion to approve the second reading and adopt the business. And second, down, any discussion?
I have one question.
Yeah?
So, probably about a couple of years ago, there was a policy regarding home schoolers that participated in active activities.
Yes.
Um, we take that discussion. So, just kind of want to revisit that discussion. That would be an option.
Sure.
So, I have a question. So, if you're a home school student in Greenwood Lake, you're not eligible to take action for the activities?
No, I'm not.
What's the reason?
Uh, it was for class.
Because, I mean, I would be, I would be in favor of allowing clubs that we have or sports in the church. I mean, obviously, we would have to look at transportation.
They can join sports teams, sports is a big one. So, that they can too. Maybe like plus country, like, that's not a bad, really. That you can have in the sports.
So, if they can join all the act, actual clubs that are there?
Yes. As long as they are, um...
As long as they meet all the requirements of being able to register within the school district as well. So, there's, there's some nuances there, and I can definitely bring that forward to Policy Committee. Um, as soon as we establish a Policy Committee in July, we can send, uh, we can add that to the agenda to review that policy.
And so... A motion to approve the second reading and adopt the business policy and annual as presented, please. Mike, second. Michelle, we have a discussion. Call a favor. Close. Motion carries, six, zero. Financial reports and law courts. A motion to approve the May 2022 financial reports. Mike, second party, any discussion? Call a favor. Close. Motion carries, six, zero. Approved letting contract, Ball Bright Electric Pink. A motion to approve the middle school letting contract with Ball Bright Electric Pink as presented, please. Motion. John, second. Mike, any discussion? Call a favor. Close. Motion carries, six, zero. Approved middle school roof repairs, Aaron. With precision roofing, anything. The motion to approve precision roof roofing with a roof repair as presented, please. Motion, please. John, second. Aaron, any discussion? Call a favor. Close. Motion carries, six, zero. Approved extended school year tuition contract, Warner Valley CSD. A motion to approve the contract with Warner Valley CSD and ex, for extended school year tuition as presented, please. Motion, please. Mike, second party, any discussion? Call a favor. Close. Motion carries, six, zero. Approved summer programs, SMOA District and GLTA. A motion to approve the SMOA for the summer enrichment between the district and the Greenwood Lake Teachers Association as presented, please. Motion. John, second. Any discussion? Call a favor. Close. Motion carries, six, zero. Approved curriculum leaders, SMOA District with the Greenwood Lake Teachers Association. A motion to approve the SMOA for curriculum leaders between the district and the GLTA as presented, please. Motion. Aaron, second. Mike, any discussion? Call a favor. Close. Motion carries, six, zero. Approved continuation of reserve funds. A motion to approve the continuation of reserve funds as presented, please. Motion. Mike, second. Any discussions? Call a favor. Close. Motion carries, six, zero. Accept resignation, Marco. A motion to accept with regret the resignation of Jacqueline Marco Elementary School Board as presented. Motion, please. Mike, second. Any discussion? Call a favor. Close. Motion carries, six, zero. Accept resignation, Massey. A motion to accept with regret the resignation of Heather Massey as presented, please. Motion, please. Aaron, second. Any discussion? Close. I mean, call a favor. Close. Motion carries, six, zero. Approved agreement in lieu of appointment to probation. Was it Boski?
Boski.
Boski. A motion to approve an agreement in lieu of appointment to probation with Eric Boski as presented. Motion, please. Aaron, second. Any discussion? Call a favor. Close. Motion carries, six, zero. Approved employment agreements, non-represented staff. A motion to execute employment agreements for non-represented staff, please. Motion, please. Mike, second. John, any discussion? Call a favor. Close. Motion carries, six, zero. Extend leave of absence, Hay. A motion to extend the leave of absence for Samantha Hay as presented, please. Motion, please. Aaron, second. Mike, any discussion? Call a favor. Close. Motion carries, six, zero. Approved change of title of Flynn. A motion to approve the change of title of Kevin Flynn as presented, please. John, second. Mike, any discussion? Call a favor. Close. Motion carries, six, zero. Appoint leave replacement teacher, Arietta. A motion to appoint Erica Arietta as leave replacement teacher as presented, please. Motion, please. Mike, second. Any discussion? Call a favor. Close. Motion carries, six, zero. Appoint permanent daily substitute, Arietta. A motion to appoint Erica Arietta as permanent daily substitute as presented, please. Motion, please. John, second. Mike, any discussion? Call a favor. Close. Motion carries, six, zero. Appoint substitute caller, Christina. A motion to appoint Ashley Christina as sub- A motion to appoint Adeline Christina as substitute caller as presented, please. Patty, second. Mike, any discussion? Call in favor. Close, motion carries six zero. Appoint website administrator, Colin. A motion to appoint Jessica Colin as website administrator as presented, please. Motion, please. Aaron, second. Mike, any discussion? Call in favor. Close, motion carries six zero. Appointment permanent daily substitute, Ryan. A motion to appoint Kara Ryan as permanent daily substitute as presented, please. Michelle, second. Mike, any discussion? Call in favor. Close, motion carries six zero. Appoint four-time technology aid, Victor Taro. Kevin. A motion to appoint Victor Taro as part-time technology aide as presented, motion, please. That's tough. Second, Aaron. Any discussion? Call in favor. Close, motion carries six zero. Appoint substitute plus monitor, Samantha. A motion to approve Christine Samantha as substitute plus monitor as presented, please. Motion, please. Mike, second. Any discussion? Call in favor. Close, motion carries six zero. Appoint teachers' summer enrichment programs. A motion to appoint teachers for the following summer enrichment programs as presented, please. Motion. Michelle, second. Any discussion? Call in favor. Close, motion carries six zero. Appoint staff members, summer committees and professional development. A motion to appoint the following staff members for the summer committees and professional development as presented, please. Michelle, second. Patty, any discussion? Call in favor. Close, motion carries six zero. Accept recommendations for CSE meetings. A motion to accept the CPSC and CSE recommendations as presented at this meeting, motion, please. Aaron, second. John, any discussion? Call in favor. Close, motion carries six zero. Proposed executive session. Enter executive session upon approval of the motion. As a reason for going to executive session, negotiating contract with the town involving the district and transportation. I get motion to adjourn to executive session, please. Motion, Aaron, second. Patty, any discussion? Call in favor. Close, motion carries six zero. No action will be taken or any executive motion. Thank you.